All right, we'll call to order the Raymore City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, January 9, 2017. Ms. Warner, would you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Abdalgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Seemers.
Present.
Mayor Turnbull absent.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see no presentations and awards or personal appearances on our records, so moving on to staff reports. Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, sir. I would ask Ms. Warner to make a staff report this evening.
Thank you and good evening. Upcoming meeting information for the council. The Cass County League of Cities Meeting will be January the 18th in Harrisonville. The MML Westgate Meeting will be January the 19th in Independence. And the MML Legislative Conference will be held this year in Jefferson City on February the 14th and the 15th. Lastly, you have a page with a correction to the December 27 meeting minutes. In the title, the replacement for the word Monday has been Tuesday, which was the night that meeting was held. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a report for Community Development.
Thank you, sir. Two items this evening. First, want to talk about the end of the year closeout for our building activity, our residential building activity. We ended up with 215 permits for new residential units, and that, the combined 250 permits was for a residential valuation of over $50 million of investment for residential growth in the city of Raymore. So, pretty significant number, certainly the highest number we've had in many, many years. The 250 subdivisions permits are over 20 different subdivisions. So, another good factor is that it's not concentrated just in one subdivision. I talk about that a lot, but it's spread through a lot of different subdivisions. Some at Custom Homes is our number one builder in the city, but we have several other builders that have done quite a few homes, SLE, SAB homes, in ward development, very active in our city. As far as the second item, the upcoming meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, they'll meet next on February 7th, and that'll be a planning meeting for them. Where staff and the commission are going to talk about a 2017 work program, a couple of planning initiatives that staff and the commission have been talking about, specific planning projects that we'll be working on. So, that'll be their focus on their next meeting, February 7th. That concludes staff report, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Fearborn? Oh, any questions of staff? Seeing none, Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Catterett. I would ask Mr. Mustine to make a report for Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It's the first time I've been able to be in front of you since the mayor's tree lighting, so I just wanted to say thank you for those of you who participated in that. It was a very well-attended event, for the first time being moved to TB Hannah Station. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and from the staff, we appreciate any participation you had in that. Couple other things. The program guide has now been delivered to all the homes in Raymore, and online registration is now active, so if there's anything that you're interested in participating in, your, our new website is your source. Let's, this week, Park Superintendent Rulo, myself, and Park Maintenance Worker Jake Powers will be attending the Shade Tree Conference to renew our Arborist certifications. This Saturday will be the opening day of the Youth Basketball League, so we'll be keeping an eye on the weather for that. If anybody has any questions about that, we have a rain out line, and also our Facebook will be active on both of those, keeping everybody up to date. And finally, our park board meets tomorrow night, and our regular work session on the second Tuesday of the month. So, with that, that concludes staff report.
Any questions of staff? Yes, Councilmember Holman?
Think I know the answer, but can you kind of give us an update on the status of the shade structures? I know you started the footings. I didn't know if we had made any progress. We've had some rough weather since then, but if you'd had any movement on that at all.
Yes, sir. Actually, we had a progress meeting this morning with the contractors, and three of the fields, the uprights, the posts and everything are already set in there. The rest of them are coming in. We're working through some line locates, things like that. But the weather obviously kind of hinders some of that work, and as you can tell, this past few days it did, and then with what's coming up. But we still are on target, and everything seems to be going fine outside of just those little minor issues.
It's good to hear. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Barber?
I hope I know the answer to this one. The TB Hannah where all the Christmas trees and everything, that was really nice. Did a really good job there. Was everything there when you took everything down this year that you put up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, Mr. Mustine. I would ask Ms. Howe to make a report.
Good evening. I have a follow-up item on the ETC survey from our last conversation. During that last conversation, Councilmember Abdalgawad asked for staff to research, including an alternate question, and so on your, at each of your seats, I have included three options for additional questions to ask and follow up to the Raymore community conversation that we held in the spring. And so, the first question is the new question, and this comes from, in one of the conversations, people were asked to rank their top ideas, and so these are the top six ideas. And so, one option would be to include a question that has them further rank, the top three ideas. Question B, again, looks at what this components of a successful town center area would be. And then, question C is the question about what it would look, what would, how much would people support an increase in the park levy portion of the property tax? And we're still finalizing what those answers would be, but the question is phrased in a way that they would say, "I would support up to this amount, or up to this amount, or up to this amount, or up to this amount." So, we'll get those filled in once we hear back from all of our team members on that. So, tonight, in order to stay on schedule, we only have room for two of these questions, so I need to know which two questions you would like to have included.
Mr. Kellogg?
Just some clarification. I'm not going to chime in on what you just asked, on what two yet, but to clarify, question two, what features would a successful town center area have in Raymore? Select three. Are we classifying a town center same thing as what our discussions have been around and the ambiguities of a downtown? When we say town center, we're talking downtown, so for, am I correct?
Yeah, you're correct. And during the last meeting, I talked about choosing to use the words "town center" instead of downtown, because we think downtown brings to mind a very specific image of a, kind of an old-town downtown, or a Main Street feel, which we don't have in Raymore. And so, knowing we don't have that, what are the core features people are looking for when they refer to a downtown or a town center area? So, we're trying to drill down on that, knowing that was one of the top ideas that came from the community conversations.
Okay. Before we actually start throwing out suggestions, any questions of staff before we go to our thoughts? If none, if none addition, if none additional, anybody have any suggestions on which two? Mr. Kellogg?
No, I'll use this time for that, since it's most appropriate. I personally believe A and B are the most important for myself and for the folks that I represent. C is talking about, you know, tax levy, how much would, would a person support this and that. And quite frankly, conversations I've had have very little of that, the concern there. So, if I'm wrong, I would welcome phone calls, emails, text messages, you know, but the bellwether that I have, the two most important, I believe, would be A and B.
Any others, any other recommendations? Councilmember Hubach?
I was under the impression that the state statute on maintenance of parks came up with a maximum, we do like one and a half mil, and the maximum is two mil. So, I think I was kind of hoping we'd show it like that, what it is now, and what it would be if we took the full amount of the, what the state statute requires on maintenance. We're not talking about adding anything, we're just talking about maintaining what we have.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember?
Just for clarification, when you say mil, you mean parts of a penny, not, not million? That's what I, I want, I wanted to clarify that for anybody that was listening, because that might be confusing. I knew that's what you meant, but, because we had had that discussion before. And while I'm speaking, I like questions A and B as well.
Any other recommendations or thoughts? Councilmember Holman?
I think all the questions are valid. I would support Ms. Hubach's position that C is an important question. Granted, no one likes tax increase, just on its face, but I think that there's some value in maybe finding out how much people value our park system. Whichever two we decide is fine. I don't have an incredibly strong opinion, but I see her point. Include question C is to see what kind of percentage we get back. I think there's some value in that.
We're almost halfway. Mr. Seemers?
I agree. I would go with A and B. I think question C can be accomplished through a, an educational campaign of the city, if we get to that point, and show them how little of their tax dollars actually go towards the park maintenance compared to their overall property tax and their, and tax bill on the annual basis. So, I would go for A and B for the survey.
Okay. Ms. Hubach?
See, what I'm concerned about is about the maintenance. Programming usually pays for itself, because there's fees and all. But where we run short then is on how we pay for the maintenance. And a lot of that comes just from us, from the council, increasing the amount of giving that we normally give to the parks. But this would go strictly for maintenance. This here says maintenance and programming, but the state statute only says maintenance.
Okay. Councilmember Abdalgawad?
I'll just throw my opinion out there. I would choose A and B as well.
Okay. Councilmember Barber, you got a little...
Well, I think I've been overruled, but I see the importance in C mainly just to kind of get it off the table. I think I know what the answer will be, honestly. I mean, we're, we're to a point where, you know, folks are, you know, they want things, but at the same time, they're going to say, "I don't want my taxes going up." So, be, be more creative, figure out some things that you can do. We don't want our taxes going up. But I still think C would be important, just to get it off the table, and then I like B too, so.
Okay. And since I'm the only one that hasn't offered an opinion, I'll go ahead and chime in. Actually, I have more concerns than actually likes. I'll start with the one I'm the most concerned about. I'm not comfortable, I like all three general ideas of questions, but question three, it's, it's already bad enough whenever we talk debt service, that the council, even though many of us have been up here, some of us for a great number of years, and we always have to go through a primer, just to kind of remember what, what happens if it goes up, if it goes down. It's a complicated calculation. The idea of throwing a question like this defined in one small question, I'm not sure we're going to elicit necessarily the, the answer that the, that the person taking the questionnaire would want to give us. So, I think this is something that maybe we independently would want to evaluate. So, for the sake of the ET survey, ETC survey, it's a wonderful valuable question. I just don't like how it's crafted here, and I think Ms. Hubach also added concerns about the language. I don't particularly care for A, but by default, it would be my B, or my second choice, only because it's so generic, and most of our community conversation really helped slightly prioritize those. And when you're giving three out of six answers, you're not really, you're not really pushing that down to some finite numbers, and we're going to basically get a similar answer we got then. B, I think, is a very sound one. I'm very supportive of. So, by default, and long-winded, I like B than A, and I think C has value for another day. Since Ms. Howe, you probably want, do you want a formal vote on that, just to get, but I think it's almost unanimous that it was A and B.
What I'm hearing is A and B. Okay. I will move in that direction. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Howe.
Do you have any more on the ETC?
I do not.
I would ask Chief Zimmerman to make a report for Police Department.
I told Councilmember Morehead that I would be 30 minutes top, since it's such a short agenda, giving my presentation. But I understand that Ryan Murdock, the wee baby turtle of emergency management, was here, was here last month in my, in my place, in my place. So, hopefully, you got all of your questions answered about emergency management. You owe me $5. He swore I wouldn't do it. Don't ever bet. Don't, don't bet. I'm going to talk to you tonight about crime stats. It's an appropriate time, obviously, comparing 15 to 16, and, you know, to talk about some of the things that have been going on here in Raymore. And so, you know, please stalk me at any time, you know, as I'm kind of talking about some of these things. And I want to give a special thanks to Lieutenant Abdalgawad, who's in the back of the room, who was on his knees in my office today, trying to figure out what these numbers all mean. So, I actually have a picture to prove that as well. When you hear the federal government or the media or others refer to UCR and Part I crimes, for those of you who are not familiar with that, they're talking about that national method of collecting data, statistical data with regard to crimes across the United States. And that program is administered by the FBI and has been since the 1930s. The categories and their definitions of crimes were established by the FBI, and all of us, that makes sure that all law enforcement agencies are all on the same page with regard to that data. And so, Raymore, the city of Raymore, and 18,000 others across the United States are all reporting that crime data in exactly the same fashion. Again, for those of you not familiar, Part I crimes are those serious crimes, which are homicide, sex crimes, rape, robbery, assaults, burglaries, stealings, and those types of crimes. So, when I, I'm going to report to you about Part I crimes and increases in Part I crimes, you'll have a better understanding of what I'm talking about when I talk about an increase from 2015 to 2016. Before I really get into very much of the numbers, I want to tell you that the increase in Raymore that I'm going to talk about is not an anomaly. You are probably hearing and seeing in the news media that crime is increasing in a number of areas all across the country, most specifically in property crimes, which is what we're seeing here. The trends that we found, that Lieutenant Abdalgawad and I found in some neighboring jurisdictions, both here in the area and like-sized cities here in the metro, are the same. What we're fortunate in is that we are not seeing the dramatic increase in violent crime that some of those cities are seeing as well. And if you're interested, I certainly, Lieutenant Abdalgawad, I'll volunteer him to produce any type of statistical data you are interested in seeing. But there is the Missouri Highway Patrol UCR website, where you can go and look at any city, you can compare any year one to the next, and it's very, very interesting data. Although our Part I crime is up, nearly the entire increase that we saw from 2015 to 2016 is in the categories of larceny or stealing and theft from auto, or, and motor vehicles. So, when I say that our Part I crime has gone up, that means in those areas, almost solely in the city of Raymore. And so, those violent crimes and more serious property crimes have decreased. So, homicide, robbery, assault, burglary, arson are all down in our community, which are good things. Obviously, those are very serious crimes as well. When I say stealing, and I use those terms interchangeably, either larceny or stealing, that refers to all types of shoplifting, theft from motor vehicles, both accessories and items that are contained inside the vehicles, purse snatches, where there's not any type of assault against the person who's had their purse stolen, breaking into coin-operated machines and property that's taken from unsecured areas like your front yard or things like that. We felt like it was important, and when I talked to Mr. Fearborn about this, about doing this presentation tonight, I wanted to make sure that the audience that's watching and your constituents know that those stealing crimes are highly preventable. And so, it's frustrating for our officers when, you know, if we could just get folks to lock their cars and take their keys and do things like that, that, you know, we always want to use education to try and prevent those crimes, so that, you know, we're not responding, we're not trying to solve those crimes after they've occurred. So, I would tell folks watching tonight that always lock your car, remove valuables from your car, purses, electronics, weapons, the types of things that we see stolen out of cars are just crazy how valuable they are, and they're left a lot of times in unsecured vehicles. Never leave your vehicle running unattended. We had a lot of stolen autos, and we do, especially this time of year, when, you know, someone will warm their car up and leave it running in front of their house, in front of a convenience store, things like that. Never leave the keys in your vehicle, even if it's parked in your garage, because if your house gets burglarized, now they have keys to your car as well. Make sure that all of your doors, garage doors are secured before leaving the house or going to bed. Lots of times, especially in the summer months, we will have individuals who don't realize that they leave their garage door open at night, you know, when they've gone to bed, and, and things get stolen out of the garage and things like that. Never leave valuables unattended in the yard, lawn mowers, snowblowers, things like that, because that's a stealing, and that contributes to, to that crime stat. And then, I know you see a lot of this in the news media about having packages delivered to your home. Have the packages delivered someplace where there will be somebody there to, to make sure that they're going to sign for the package or accept the package. Some of the increase that we've seen in shoplifting reports and arrests as well are attributed to more aggressive loss prevention officers. We've got a great crew up at Walmart that we work with all the time, and they're taking lots and lots of folks into custody. So, we see an increase in, in stats. Doesn't mean that, that there's more stealings that are occurring. We're catching them more often, or their loss prevention is catching those folks more often. Nationwide in 2015, 46% of violent crimes and 19% of property crimes were cleared by arrest or exceptional means. And you've heard me talk in a previous presentation about our outstanding detective unit, and so, comparing those national statistics, 46% for violent crime, 86% of violent crime was solved by our detectives here in Raymore, and 19% of property crimes compared to 34% here in Raymore. So, our folks do a really good job compared to the national average. And lastly, I want to tell just a couple of really quick stories about some crime sprees that happened here in Raymore in 2016, in which our detectives did such a good job identifying those suspects and getting those folks under arrest, that it bears mentioning. A stealing, an individual who we caught for stealing, we were able to clear eight cases of high-value items that had been stolen by this individual, plus a Lee Summit case, and five KCPD cases. And that's one person here in our community in 2016. 14 cases of motor vehicle theft and stealing, and that's one individual, three stolen autos, stolen gun, numerous thefts from the vehicles over the course of two nights, and we cleared 14 cases and one case in Belton. And again, you know, one individual. So, you know, when, when you think about our increase in crime, our detectives have done a good job identifying those folks and putting them in jail and getting them prosecuted. And then, lastly, nine cases with two juveniles that was, that were responsible for one burglary, seven stolen autos, a stolen gun, and numerous thefts from vehicles, and we cleared nine cases in Raymore. So, again, you know, I can't say enough about the good job, and that's working in partnership. Our detectives are identifying those folks, and our patrol guys are going out and getting them. So, anybody have any questions for...
Mr. Burke?
I was going to ask, if you don't know this, that's fine. Do you know what percentage of the thefts from vehicles were from unlocked vehicles?
I don't, but I can find out. You know, sometimes, you know, I mean, it's obvious sometimes if there's no forced entry, no window broken, you know, things like that. But sometimes, we have individuals swear up and down that their car was locked. But, you know, certainly can look into it.
I think, just by reading the weekly reports, I would, I would guess that it's higher than 70%, higher, higher than 75 or 80.
Yeah, that's, that's a pretty safe bet. It's, it's usually 75, 80%.
Any other questions? Mr. Seemers?
Several years ago, we had high vandalism in town. Has the vandalism decreased? Because I don't see it on the police report over the past few months, so.
It, it has. We, we're not dealing with a lot of those, those types of property crimes. Now, I probably jinxed myself now. Now, it's going to happen.
I probably jinxed this by asking the question, so.
Yeah, now it's going to happen. No, we're not dealing with that nearly as much. As I mentioned, you know, we, we had some pretty significant crime sprees, and when we're dealing with, when I mention these numbers, and the number of cases we cleared with individuals that we arrested, we know that there are always more cases out there than that. And, you know, in particular, when you talk about things like vandalism, and we look at juvenile suspects, a lot of times in those cases, we know that they're responsible for some of those things as well.
And then, one other follow-up. Do we know if the people who are committing these high volumes of crimes, are they more local folks, and that's why they're more easily found? Or are they coming in from other parts of town to do their crime spree and then leave?
Could you set this up, sir?
No.
Well, I, you know, I'm sure that the people in Kansas City wouldn't appreciate me saying this, but, but, don't get me wrong, we do arrest local folks as well, but many, many times, the warrants that we clear, the individuals that we arrest, both for shoplifting and other crimes, are coming into our community from other communities.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Thank you. Chief Zimmerman, I was wondering, you know, a lot of people in town have read about Raymore being declared a safe city. And so, I'm wondering, of the numbers you've given us tonight, how many of those are ones that are considered in that safe city classification? And it may be very kind of, I don't know, not based on these numbers, the safe city name.
They do. They, they use the UCR numbers when they declare, there was an article in the paper about us being, I think we were number 10.
Is it actual crimes? Does it include the number of crimes that, like, are solved? I was just curious.
Yeah, it actually is, what they use, what UCR goes, is based on is, is number of crimes per 100,000. Obviously, we're nowhere near 100,000 in our population, but, yeah, they, they are basing that, not necessarily on the crimes cleared, but just the number of crimes that, that are occurring and being reported. And, and as I mentioned, you know, it's very interesting to go on the UCR website for the Highway Patrol, because, you know, as we're trying to find creative ways to address a spike in crime like stealing, you know, we're looking at, you know, other communities all throughout the region, and throughout the country, that are dealing with exactly the same kinds of things. So, yeah, I think that, that, you know, as it has risen for us, it's risen for others, which has maybe kept our place on the safe city list, because we are very, very safe. And, and as I mentioned, as Lieutenant Abdalgawad and I were looking at those other communities throughout the metropolitan region to see those types of trends and how we compare with, with other cities, we saw the same spike in stealing in those communities, but we also saw those spikes in violent crime that we didn't see in Raymore, thankfully.
Mr. Barber?
Thank you. Just for my curiosity, is, has he, have we had more accidents this year than we did the year before? I know you and I, is that the one statistic you would have?
Yeah, I don't have anything about accidents on here, but I can sure find, I can find out.
Yeah, you know, we talked about speed, and we, we're dealing with a generation of drivers that speed seems to be just a guide, and stop signs just need, are kind of an option. And I just wondered if that's affect from year to year, how that goes, so.
Let me do some, some workup on accidents, to be able to report back to you all accurately. You know, anecdotally, it seems like, you know, there were, I mean, obviously, you know, I worked, I directed traffic on a fatality that we had out on 58, and, you know, so, you know, when you have those type of very serious accidents, you know, it maybe seems like there's been an increase. But let me at least do some, some work on that and report back.
Any other questions? Well, I will, I will say...
Perfect timing.
We'll say, Chief Zimmerman, I'm disappointed. You did promise me a crime prevention demonstration by tasering Mr. Zur, so.
I am still happy to do that.
Some days more than others.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Fearborn?
Thanks, sir. And, you know, one of, one of chief's mantras and admonitions to me quite often is, and I'm sure you've all heard her say it as well, see something, say something. And she tells me that all the time, when I'm asking her questions about something that I saw but didn't say, and it's two hours later, and she's reminding me. But I, you also probably saw in my New Year's letter to our employees, Raymore is called a safe city because... we are a safe city, and we have a lot to be proud of with the numbers that you all just heard this evening. So, thank you, chief, and thanks to your whole department for everything they do. Upcoming work session next Tuesday night, January seventeenth. Two items on the agenda, but the primary thing, it kind of all rolls into one, will be the council and council member Hubach requested staff report on progress towards meeting the requirements of our courts as it relates to Senate Bill Five, Supreme Court Rule Thirty-Seven. Mr. Zur will be there to make a report. Judge Nigro will be present to give instruction on everything that he's been doing and that the court is doing. Our prosecutor will also be there, Mr. Marshall, to discuss what we're doing holistically, and I'll be there to discuss the budget impacts that we're probably going to see from this. And of course, Chief Zimmerman, who is kind of, for lack of a better term, from a staff standpoint, kind of the glue holding all of that together, thank you for reminding me on that, because she has actually been kind of spearheading the effort, so. That concludes staff reports for this evening, sir.
Thank you. We have no committee reports. Moving to the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to dispose.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Yes.
I would ask, sir, that we separate out Item C, appointment of Lauren Jones as an alternate member to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we approve Items A, B, D, and E on the consent agenda. Item A, City Council minutes December twenty-seventh. Item B, appointments and affirmations of membership to the incentive district boards. Item D, reappointment of Board of Appeals members. And Item E, two thousand sixteen street preservation overlay acceptance and final payment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? The vote is unanimous to approve. Moving back to Item C, Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I would like to move that we approve the appointment of Lauren Jones as an alternate member to the Board of Adjustment.
Is Mr. Jones present?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Item C. Any discussion? Mr. Holman?
Sorry, the reason that I asked this to be separated out, this is an exciting time for me. I met Mr. Jones three years ago, who did not know me from Adam, and I asked him to donate a significant amount of his personal time and some of his professional time to teach a group of youngsters how to dance the Thriller dance at my house. And he did it without hesitation, he worked with a bunch of kids he didn't know, and this is a guy that's gonna go a long way in our community. I am so glad to see him get involved in city government. That's why I asked this to be separated. There is, there may be as fine, but there is no finer citizen in the community of Raymore, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? I will go ahead and say, as a fellow member of Ward Two, Mr. Jones' name has crossed my path positively a number of times, and I'm glad to see his joining the team and participating and volunteering for our city. With that, all in favor? Vote is unanimous to approve. We have no unfinished business tonight, so moving on to new business, Ms. Warner, I'd ask for the first reading of Bill Thirty-two Thirty-One by title only.
The first reading of Bill Thirty-two Thirty-One by title only, an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Bartlett and West, Inc. for the Johnston Drive Extension Design Project, City Project Number Sixteen Dash Two-Four-Three-Dash Three-Zero-One, in the amount of forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Okay. Mr. Fearborn, I'll ask for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Kraus to make a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, last April, the voters approved a number of street connection projects as part of the general obligation bond election, one of which was the extension of Johnson Drive between Dean Avenue and Darobie Drive. This evening, we bring forward a design contract for that work and recommend award of the contract to Bartlett and West. Within our staff memo, we outline the qualification-based selection process that the city utilizes for professional services. That concludes my staff report.
Okay, any questions of staff? Mr. Seamers?
Is everything, I'm curious of the area that is involved for the road construction, is it from the North Tree Line down to basically anything north of the trail that's currently in is available to be, the road to be put through?
Actually, the road is being constructed on the alignment that's already been platted by the Timber Trails Development. The map you see there is just a schematic of the connection.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious if there was any change in what the alignment I'd seen previously was. That's why, I didn't notice that line was exactly where it was previously, but, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Kraus, just point of reference, you're talking about the plat that the council dealt with last month.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir. Any other questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill Thirty-two Thirty-One.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we approve Bill Thirty-two Thirty-One, a word of contract for Johnson Drive Extension Design.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Holman?
This is one of our eight total numbers, our separate bond projects, is that right, that were approved by the voters? This was four of the street projects under a separate question.
This is one of the four street projects, yes, sir.
Excellent one. We've heard Councilmember Kellogg talk about this on a number of occasions. He, and I certainly agree with him on this, I think that this is going to be a project of great value to everyone in the city, but especially to the members of you and Mr. Seamers' Ward. It should open up traffic flow and give people options to go down to the North Cass Parkway as well, so can't speak well enough about this one, good stuff.
Any other, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam, and thank you, Mr. Holman, for the acknowledgement and the words. One thing that, not only betterment for that particular neighborhood in Ward One, but also, in my opinion, the whole city that traverses from east to west, the number of traffics that I believe that this will allow another way out rather than right there at the end of Hansman or Darobie is great. So I believe not just the folks in Ward One, particularly Foxhaven and Foxwood Springs over in Ward Three, will see a benefit there, but everybody else will, I believe, so. It can't happen soon enough, but this is how government works, and I've heard you say many, many times, and you said it again tonight, you know, this is us moving forward, this is one of those things that, you know, it's those bricks and mortars that's gonna make us great, so just one more step that way, so thank you very much.
Any other comments? Seeing no more discussion, all in favor? Vote is unanimous to approve. Moving on to Item B, Ms. Warner, I'd ask for the first read of Bill Thirty-two Thirty by title only.
The first reading of Bill Thirty-two Thirty by title only, an ordinance of the City of Raymore to amend its benefit program under the Missouri Local Government Employees Retirement System, Loggers.
Ask for a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. As part of the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget, funding was included to move the city from Loggers Benefit Program L Seven with a one-point-five-percent formulary to Loggers Benefit Program L Six with a two-point-zero-percent formulary. The calculated cost to make this change is three hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars in all operating funds per year. The yearly savings realized from transition to the city-owned streetlights, hard worked on by a number of our employees, will be used in large part to fund this program. That concludes staff reports, sir.
Okay, any questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to dispose.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move that we approve Bill Thirty-two Thirty, adopting Loggers Benefit Program L Six.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Holman?
Another good one here. We're taking care of our folks. We talked about, Kevin mentioned how we're moving forward, we know that, we keep talking about that. The reason behind a lot of that, in fact, the majority of that, are the roughly one-hundred people that we have in our employ here, and they do a great job year after year. This is just another way to show them that we want to keep them around as long as we can and that they are doing a good job for us. It also brings us in line with other cities in the area that are already at L Five, and so this is a great move. And the best part of this is, Mr. Fearborn, since he got rid of that pesky habit of sleeping, was able to find money to pay for this by buying our own streetlights and save us, actually in excess of what this cost, I believe, the annual estimated savings on the streetlights was around six hundred thousand, if I remember correctly. Little, just a little, bottom line, I guess, the amount that we're paying here is not the full portion of that saving, so, well done, sir.
Any other comments? I'll go ahead and chime in, actually start with a question. Mr. Fearborn, when was the last time that a Loggers adjustment was made?
It's been a very long time, sir.
And that's kind of the point I wish to kind of express, is that as a person in another employment who is attached with Loggers, who my L number is substantially lower than this L number, but this is a well-deserved increase, I wished, while I don't wish to take any compliment away from Mr. Fearborn, I do know that Ms. Watson and a number of other staff helped really to bring about how this money gets dealt with, so any increase to our budget and operating funds is partially addressed and covered by that. So it's been very responsible and very well-earned. I don't believe L Six is even the highest.
No, sir.
So we're not, you know, but that's the whole point. This is, when you look at the competitiveness of other cities, I know that, without getting into too much detail, I noticed some of the surrounding cities have had a number of key staff leave and move to other positions. We've kind of amongst ourselves here agreed that the six in front of us of our staff for sure will be held against their will not to leave, but nonetheless, things like this make it, make people who want to be here feel more comfortable about wanting to stay as well, and we appreciate you, so this is a well-deserved bill. With that, if no other questions, all in favor? Passes unanimously. That ends new business. We'll move on to public comments. We actually do have a few members I see of the public. Any of you may come up, please state your name and your address, please limit your comments to under five minutes. And please feel free to come up. We do love hear, we want to hear what you have to say. Can I guilt any of you to come up? No, and I appreciate your attendance nonetheless. Seeing no one coming up, we'll move on to mayor council communication. I'll do the rolling ball, so I'll start with Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I really don't have much to say tonight. I absolutely hate turning on the news anymore, but it's one of those things you gotta do. It's very nice to see the transfer of power and the inauguration of our new governor, Governor Eric Greitens, I watched that today, very wonderful ceremony. Another thing that I saw in the news today, unfortunately, in another state, we had another officer shot. I don't know the status of that officer, but my heart and prayer goes out to each and every officer out there on that street. I don't need to tell them to be safe, I know that they are safe as well as they can be. You know, I, it just really bothers me to see our first responders and the people that keep us safe being targeted like they are. It's deplorable, and they're in my prayers. I'd like to thank Chief Zimmerman for her report tonight, and if there's any groups out there or anybody that would like to know how they can help themselves not be a target of such easy crimes, I would suggest you call in Chief Zimmerman or even Lieutenant Ali Abdellguad, and I know both of them, not just those two, but our whole staff would be more than willing and happy to share those tips and those tricks, and they're not really tricks, it's just many times it's common sense, you know. I've said many times, and I hate to say this, but I saw this on Facebook. Somewhere in Michigan, somebody had their car stolen, so first thing they do instead of paying the ticket, they take a picture of it, paste it on Facebook and call in the officer disparaging name for giving them a ticket for running their car in their driveway. Well, that's just, you know, I see that as an easy opportunity, and that's what thieves are, they're opportunists. Don't, you know, I'm saying like I'm preaching, but I've got nobody to blame for myself for many things around my house if I can prevent it. It's, you know, my employer tells me that most, ninety-nine percent of the accidents that can happen to me at work are preventable, which means it's my fault for not taking care of myself for that. A running car in the driveway in the winter is nothing more than an easy target. And like I say, I don't want to sound like I'm preaching, but if somebody was to steal my car, sitting in my driveway with my keys in it, running, I got nobody to blame but myself, and then what do I do? I call the officers to come and bail me out for my own silliness or irresponsibility, and that's not their job. I know that they will respond, but fact of the matter is, if I could have prevented it, it was my own fault, so. That's what I got tonight. Thank you much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Thank you. I've been teaching here since, in Raymore, Raypack School District since nineteen ninety-eight, and at the time that I, my first year teaching here, I still lived on armor in Warwick. As I looked out the back window, I could see what was an empty field, they called the Glover Project, which is now Home Depot and everything else. And so I would drive from that part of the city to Raymore each morning, and it just shocked me when I would go to lunch at school and students would say, hey, my bookbag was taken, and I would say, hey, let me help you, where was it? Oh, I left it outside your door, your locked door, and I went to lunch. And at the same time, the kids didn't really use locks on their lockers a lot here, and I thought, wow, this is really, really a different place. But it's the same kind of thinking as any time that I had a situation where I had to call the police in Kansas City, which was multiple times where I had different things broken into, almost every single time it was because I had been lazy and left something visible in my truck or something visible in my storage container at my apartment or wherever. And as I, as every week, and I've been doing this probably for a decade, each week, reading the police report that comes out every week, and it's amazing how many cars are broken into that are unlocked over and over and over. I came from a situation where I had a friend that actually would leave a note in his glove box in huge bold print saying, there's nothing in here. He would leave his glove compartment open, so you could see, looking in the car, that there was nothing in there, including the glove box. Help yourselves out, lock the car. Anyway, and then the second thing I want to say with the Loggers, I wanted to make sure, I tried to get to be the second on that bill, because you really, I think the number one thing that I've always felt, I've always been pro employee, and the better you treat your employees, the better they're gonna treat everyone that they work for. And I really want to thank all of the staff in the city. I think it's something that they deserve, they need to be able to feel like, and I said this when I ran for election the first time, I don't want jobs for the city, I want careers. I want health care, I want benefits, I want those kind of things, because when you're at work, if you're worried that you're not gonna be able to pay for something, because maybe you need to call your wife and say, hey, I don't know if we can afford to do this with the dental or whatever, if you know that you're being compensated while you're at work, you give a hundred percent of yourself while you're actually on the job, because you don't have to stress that you're, that you need to make up some and maybe get another job on the side. Anyway, thanks to everybody in Raymore, appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I promised Ms. Hubach I'd be short, I might break that a little bit, but I want to thank the chief for the report, your in-report, sorry for putting you on the spot with asking for the accident statistics, but it's interesting that when you get down in the weeds and really look at what those mean, we did have a good year as far as crime goes, so appreciate that. Mr. Catarat, it was good to have the report that we're growing. Mr. Katerat, you know, it's good to have, um, the report that we're growing, still growing. So, uh, and really, what's nice is we're growing all over, not just in one area. So, hopefully, we continue that trend, open up some new areas and have, have that, um, keep flowing into next year. I, I had an invitation to be at the, with the governor today, not exactly with him, probably one of six thousand people, but, uh, I didn't, I knew there'd be a big crowd here tonight and that, uh, my obligation is to be here, so I gave that up and, uh, and everything that we did tonight, I'm, I'm glad I did. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hubach?
Nothing to say tonight.
Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I don't like to be accused of beating a dead horse by saying the same thing everybody else has said, but I really don't feel like these are dying horses. I think we have lots of great things to brag about in our city, and we got to hear about so many of them tonight. The new single-family housing permits, fifty million dollars in residential growth this year in over twenties, or in twenty subdivisions. Great news from chief about our crime rate, as far as larceny stealing, that from autos being pretty much in line with growth anywhere else. But our violent crimes not growing like other similar cities. The information about the detectives and our cases that we've cleared, that's, that's amazing work when you compare our percent to the national average. National average of forty-six percent compared to eighty-six percent here, um, for violent crimes, nineteen percent for national average and thirty-four percent here. We're talking like, pretty close to doubled in both of those categories as far as crimes solved in Raymore, compared to the national average. More work that's supported by our citizens with the GeoBond, talking about the Johnston Drive Extension, that's amazing, awesome to be able to brag about. We had in the consent agenda, it went by pretty quickly, but a whole list of, um, people in the city that are willing to volunteer on our city boards and, um, commissions. And so, that's amazing that we have those people that are willing to support the city as volunteers. And then finally, having the opportunity as a council to support and show appreciation to our awesome staff here. We have a great city to live in, and it's because we have awesome, hard-working staff that just work tirelessly every day and night, sometimes, well, our police department, every night, but people who don't have to work nights or working nights too. So, and it's incredible that we can do that without a need for extra funds, and that's what's really amazing. So, money saved with another project is funding our, this opportunity to be able to hopefully keep the awesome people that we have working in Raymore. So, tons and tons to brag about tonight. So, I had to take advantage of that and say everything again. I apologize.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'll start off with congratulations, Lauren. Finally recruited you to the team and got you here, so, um, we just lost Gerard Dyson from the Royals, so we got you in. I guess that's a pretty fair trade. I want to thank the enhanced audience attending tonight. Typically, people attending a city council meeting are here for about one of three to four reasons. One, uh, their client or their business has some piece of business in front of the city. They are a member of some government class at the high school, and they're required to be here for an assignment, or they're here to complain about something. And this crowd I sense is a little bit different tonight. I see faces here that are new, I think people that are interested in city government. You don't know how refreshing that is to the eight of us up here on this group. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being concerned citizens, all of you. I would like to thank the staff, not only for what you have done for the entire time I've been here and beyond, but what, for what you are about to do. Because, folks, we are about to go in overdrive. I'm gonna coin a phrase, two thousand seventeen will be known as the year of visible growth in the city of Raymore. If you doubt that or don't know what I'm talking about, when you leave, drive behind the building and see Centerview being constructed. It's gonna be up within the next three to four months. That'll be our new community center. Drive over to the Raymore Marketplace is the correct term, correct? You'll see that the exterior mat, correct me if I'm wrong, Qdoba, is already there. That's the, uh, uh, concrete block building right now. And then the metal stud building, I'm assuming, is going to be Kay Jewelers. How about that? I got that right. New, yeah, there's, there's more coming. Those are just the ones that we've started. What, what's the term you use? Vertical growth, is that it, Matt? That's good news for us. That's good stuff. We see the growth of our city. We have new businesses coming in. Very good. In addition to that, we're going to have the extension of Johnson Drive. We talked a little bit about, little bit about that tonight. The new straight, shade structures at the, at Recreation Park, uh, all the number of projects at Hockridge, which we haven't even started on yet. And this is not naming all of them. This will be an incredible transformation year for the city of Raymore that has been a number of years in planning, and it is thanks to the hard-working staff and the fine citizens of Raymore for passing our bond projects, both of them somewhere in the realm of about eighty percent approval. So, thank you very much. We intend to pay you back this year. I think you'll see it, and I think you'll enjoy it. That's all I have.
Councilmember Seamers?
Well, since I told Mr. Townsend that we'd be out here by eight o'clock tonight, and I want to keep my remarks short. And I, I thank him for showing up. Him, Mr. Townsend, as you don't know, is running against me in Ward One for the one-year expired seat, and I'm, I'm glad to see him here. And I've met him and talked to him, and he's, he's a, he's a nice guy, so we'll, we'll have some nice, interesting conversations as we move forward. I want to thank the chief for the report. I want to thank, uh, city staff, Cindy Watson and Mr. Fearborn for the laggards. And then, um, the unsung hero of the week before, uh, New Year's was Matt. I, I really appreciate the, uh, the tour that he took us on of all the things that are going on in the city from an economic development standpoint, and, and teaching us and showing some of us who didn't see the tour earlier in the year of what is out there and how daunting the task is to fill the space that we have. You know, people see Fifty-Eight Highway and they think, well, why isn't something built there? Why isn't something built there? What they don't realize is there is three miles worth of space to the south of us that we're also trying to fill. There's a lot of gr- potential growth in the city of Raymore, um, and people just must be patient with us. There are, are things that we can do and things that we can't do. And as we move forward, you are going to see growth. And I really like the attitude and the, 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 uh, direction that the city staff is going now with Matt and, and Meredith, Ms. Houck, and Jim Fearborn. Um, I think the direction is going great, and I hope to see that continue. And Mr. Moorhead, you have three minutes to get us out of here by eight o'clock.
Well, I do have to say that, uh, now sitting in this seat, I truly understand what the mayor goes through, because all the good stuff's already gone. But, uh, as a lawyer, I can fill three minutes, not a problem. That's true, but I can't resist myself. You know, I've lived here for forty-three years. I've been in this town when we didn't even have a police department. And so, to watch the growth and have a father who was on the city council back in the eighties, the thing that he really pressed upon me was calculated growth. Not, you don't take blind risk, you take calculated risk. While we may not have as many new restaurants, we have good restaurants. We have very good businesses in this town. And as we continue to grow, it's not quantity, it's quality. So, I'm very proud of that growth and, and what we've become. I'm proud of our police department. Mr. Barber, traffic, uh, accidents and speed went down after my insurance grew to high risk and I had to slow down. So, that's probably part of the statistic. But, you know, for law enforcement, I do have to commend not just the two in the back room, but actually, I'd encourage everyone, e- everyone to try something. Approach a police officer in this town. It's amazing how positive it is, if you have questions, that, uh, they do less enforcement and more community service. So, um, I'm really proud of that and, uh, glad, uh, the only part of Part One that is up is property, 'cause I value my family prop- stuff, but I value my family people more, and I'm glad that those numbers are down. I do want to say that, uh, I made a comment at work the other day that nobody appreciated. I'll try it here. Twenty seventeen in Raymore's gonna be so good that twenty sixteen's jealous. And that is, we've got a lot of great things going on here, but what makes it so good is the people. And so, Mr. Jones, I have to kind of finish off a little with you, is, um, you know, one of the things that, uh, is a common denominator up here is that many of us, almost all of us, had served on a board or commission before we came on the council. It was an opportunity for us to get to understand the city and work with staff and really kind of see how things worked. By, I think there's one or two people running for office, so I'm not trying to say you shouldn't do it, but I'm just saying, uh, to commend the volunteers, um, we do have volunteer positions open up periodically. Please check the Raymore website, those, that information is available on there, and we really value the participation. We also have a number of activities, like our community, uh, conversation that we did, where we will reach out to you just to have surveys or have co- uh, town hall meetings where you can come and participate and communicate with us. We want people to come up to this dais and talk to us and, and share their feelings and, and what they're seeing, both good and bad. So, really, I have to give a lot of praise for public participation. So, all of you are here. I think we may have a scout in the room, and so, one of the other people that come, not just students, but I want to value, uh, our, our scouts at all levels, both boy and girl scouts. So, thank you for, for coming and participating with us. And with that, I believe we do have a reason to go into executive session, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we enter into executive sess- executive session to discuss personnel matters as authorized by RSMO six-ten dot oh-two-one.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Councilmember Moorhead?
Yes.
Councilmember Seamers?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned to ex- go into executive session, and then after executive session, we will come back and adjourn the main meeting.